For uh.
It's you?
No. For. With 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 us.
What was Alicia's question?
About my personal situation or even. Cause I feel.
This way, do you wanna ask?
Yeah, well, I wanna say that I wanna call Stephen.
Oh.
Kim, am I mute here? Not anymore.
Maybe.
No.
Just got.
You can hear your conversation.
Well, I'm sorry about that. We are learning, this is our first big town hall meeting and hopefully by next time we'll have this corrected. I apologize again.
I I just can't seem to myself. I'm sorry, but. I'm trying. Here we go. Nope.
Back up and running, people are starting to get back in again or up to about sixty people. Lost a few. Um. Deka Nura, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um. And I think the last person that was talking, um. I think it's it's good that you're really connected with the the division. Um, just that's just a tip. To you, um, about the neighborhood, um, community officers. Um, my question is that, um. For communities that live sort of like the borderline or of other divisions. And that's where where I live in the East Mall. Sometimes we cross over to twenty-three division. And and I know, uh, there are certain schools where, you know, the twenty-two division, the twenty-three division. You know, we share, we share in common areas, meaning schools, you know, um. Malls. Many places. Um, and I and I and I. I did mention this before to to also the officers and, um. And also in many of the committees that that we have. I also sit, uh, the CPLC for my community in twenty-two division. Um, so what we so noted is that. That. That there are communities who are highly engaged. Um, and there are communities that are not engaged. Sometimes, um, I would love to see moving forward. At the the city of Toronto, obviously, uh, wants to move toward community policing. And and the way to reach community policing. Um, is to really make sure that every community does receive, uh, what it needs. Um, and I and I think with my community, we're we're very thankful. Um, that we received what my community needs. Uh, to have a vibrant community. Thanks to twenty-two division and all the officers and the committees, uh, who really, um, um. Make sure that, uh, communities like mine, uh, are very engaged, highly engaged. Takes years to really be in the place that we're at. Um, but I think also, just because we cross for other communities, uh, well, outside of the division. Um, that we would love to see, um, a way to really, the end of the day, we're like a ma- like. Half a kilometers away from each other. So, um, I would love to see also, you know, we're talking about within the division. But when, 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 when our children and our workplaces. Uh, worship places are just a place that we're all sharing. But other other side is not receiving the same engagement, uh, that we're receiving. Uh, which not only, you know, protects our loved ones, our community, our neighbors. But also, um, makes us a contribute and be included in all, um. So, um, this is outside of the twenty-two division, but there's something that that we talked about. And we would love to see that. Uh, I don't know how that is going to be, but I'll leave that to, uh, you know, twenty-two division and the community. Uh, moving forward, um, and also, um. Just like the the speaker before me, please do 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 reach out. Um, because you deserve, you deserve, um. You deserve, you know, to peacefully, uh, live your, uh, uh, in a, in a, in in your community without. The issues you you just mentioned because, um, um, I I I I I was very, um. Hurt to 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 hear things that you said because, um, you know, we have children and 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 we want our children to be safe, so. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hi, Deka. Uh, ju- just to of. To what you said, to add to what you said about, uh, you know, with neighboring divisions and stuff like that. Uh, I know some of our neighborhood officers are actually trying to connect with the twenty-three division neighborhood officers and hopefully we can get, um. A better working relationship between twenty-three and twenty-two. And then hopefully we can start bridging, um, because again, I know some of the communities are very close to the divisional boundaries, for instance, with twenty-two and twenty-three. So we're hoping that, you know, with the collaboration with the twenty-three division officers and twenty-two that we can hopefully, you know, work something out that way.
So one thing, um, uh, that you said there, Deka, uh, is you mentioned you're on the CPLC and, um. I'm sure a a number of people that are on this meeting know what that is, but just for those who don't. CPLC is, uh, Community Police Liaison Committee. And, uh, they're a volunteer organization, but they work with the police. And, um, we, uh, work with them to. A lot of different neighborhood programs. Just recently, uh, we had a gift and or a toy drive and a food drive that CPLC worked, uh. Hand in hand with both the crew officers and the NCO officers. And, uh, we're still getting, uh, thanks back from all the people that were involved in that. We did an awesome job. CPLC was a big help with that. Uh, I know there are a number of neighborhoods, what I do is have one, uh, representative from each of our, uh, neighborhoods within twenty-two. Uh, that are CPLC, uh, so that we can work in that neighborhood. I know there are a few neighborhoods right now that do not have CPLC, uh, people in them. So if any of you that are online right now think that that would be something that you'd like to do. Uh, it's not a huge commitment. I believe they do a few hours every month and, uh, there's a meeting every couple of months. And, uh, obviously when we actually get together and, uh, plan and and run one of the, um. One of the affairs that we do, that takes a little bit of time, but it's very rewarding and you're giving back to the community that that you live in. So if anybody's interested, uh, please get ahold of me, uh, right now. Lean is our, uh, CPLC, or she was on the. Here earlier, she might have got bumped off with all the issues that we're having, but, uh. Oh, is Michael here? Oh, there, Michael, you're there. Would you like to give a plug to the CPLC? No, I guess not. That's okay. But, uh, again, uh, please. Uh, get back to any one of your officers that are in your neighborhood and if you're interested in that and we can set you up with that.
Actually, if I, oh, Michael is there. Michael is, this is Angela. Michael is there. We're both CPLC people.
I saw Michael there.
Hello?
Yeah, he's there.
There you are. I was giving a plug to the CPLC. All right, I don't see any more hands up right now, so we had a number of. Oh, there's another hand. Where's the hand?
A purple shirt waiting.
Oh, there, there you are.
Saying he's mu- he's muted.
He's muted? Alicia has something to say there, uh. Yeah, go ahead, Alicia.
Hey, thanks. Um, thanks for hosting this meeting today. Um, so I put a couple of my questions in the chat box, um, just in case. Uh, you may or may not have time to address them in this meeting, but it looks like we do. So the one, um, I guess the first one forward is a friend of mine, uh, who wished to remain anonymous, I guess was, uh, victim in a recent hit and run at Islington Lake Shore. I don't know if this is the kind of, um, thing that I should be bringing towards the meeting, but she was just, um. Saying that this neighborhood is full of like a lot of older folks, folks that are bound to chairs, walkers, this sort of thing. Um, and unfortunately, this intersection just continues to prove time and time again to be, um, like. Putting people in danger, hit and runs, people not looking, stopping before they're turning out. Um, she almost died in this accident, but like her injuries, like she just, it was late, it was scary. Um, anyways, wondering how she can go about advocating to get some, uh, like more, like traffic cameras just at that particular intersection and who we would talk to about that. Um, so that's the first question, and she really want, she didn't wanna be here, but, uh, she couldn't, she couldn't get into the meeting because it's fearful.
So anything to do with, uh, traffic signs or traffic, um, cameras, that would be through the city and.
City, okay.
Yeah, your best bet is to either go through, uh, Councillor Grimes or Holliday's office, depending on what, uh, neighborhood it is.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, sorry about that then. Um. The second piece was, uh, is specifically in regards to, um, addressing gang violence and gun violence within the neighborhood, especially within. Um, like, uh, considering how the youth population right now, especially is being extremely heavily impacted in the Lakesh- especially in the south of Tobico end of things. Um, in terms of, um, you know, lots of, uh, retaliations, uh, that young people, um, are. If they're not involved in something directly, they're going to to Lake Shore Collegiate every day and they're scared that they, um, you know, seeing they're 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 saying it right on the news. Um, and it's it's been out there for the last few days, especially since Jordan Carter had passed away, uh, in a shooting in East York. Um, there's kids being interviewed outside of Lake Shore Collegiate on the news and they're saying how. Guns have been normalized, gang violence is being normalized in this community specifically. And that, um, they feel that nothing's being done about it. Um, I'm just here, you know, I I I am a parent, but I'm also just here as a community member. I carry a youth working background myself, so I'm just kind of, um. Yeah, wondering, um, I guess it's such a big topic. I I came here today to request from you folks if you could have a separate or a specific town hall meeting. For, you know, parents and families in the neighborhood, especially concerned parents, um, to help us understand gang violence, talk about how we can talk to our kids. Um, address, address things that are happening, where kids can go to report safely. Even if they're not feeling safe to go online, they're not feeling safe to talk at all, because when you talk or maybe share things, they fear they will end up like their friends who are getting shot. Um, or being set up, so this whole, you know, ratting system, like there's, it's, um. I guess I've been personally watching a lot of young people grieving. I knew this young person well myself, so it's. It's, uh, we're currently today on Monday, um, in a, in a, in a, at a place where I feel that the community needs sort of an emerg- more emergent response to what's happening. Um, because we know that, uh, there's ripple, there's always ripple effects when something like this happens, especially with, uh. Like we're talking about thirteen, fourteen, fifteen year olds, um, who also may not have the supports at home. Or even in their school, like, safe places to process what's happening. So I know, again, it's a big one to try to talk about here, but we're really hoping that we can get you folks to host another meeting so that. People that are concerned specifically around these issues can come and talk to you and. And learn and listen and share and even have a youth, the youth talk to you about how they're feeling and stuff. But there's a broken relationship as well between, between. Law enforcement and people that are living these realities. Thank you for listening.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Alicia. Um, there's a number of different things that you said with that. And I I think I saw a lot of thumbs going up and and people agreeing with you, if you didn't see that. Um, we we certainly understand the pain that that you go through living in the neighborhood and especially having the kids that are going to the school and that it was affected with. Um, a lot of times in the past, what we do is we actually go out to the school and we do talks. Obviously, we haven't been able to do that in the last couple of years. And, uh, I'm not saying that's a cause and effect as to what's going on, but, you know, having the the officers right there. Uh, what we used to have is the school program where we had officers for the schools. Uh, I I'm a big supporter of that. Unfortunately, the school system kind of got away from that. Um. We can always hope that it comes back at some point. Uh, what I can ask you to do right now is, Alicia, uh, there are a number of officers that have their badge numbers or, sorry, not their badge numbers, but their emails in the, in the chat. Please, uh, reach out to us through email and, uh, one of us will contact you. And, uh, we'll, we'll try and set something up, uh, for your particular neighborhood or the school or, you know. If it's not an online, maybe we can even get officers to come out and and see you there.
Okay, uh, I just wanna say a few words, Alicia, it's, uh, Superintendent Tim Prohn. Uh, I'm sorry, folks, I had to switch offices here, where I was having IT issues in my office, so I'm sitting down, uh, just down the hall. Um, thank you very much, Alicia, for your comments. That was very, very insightful and, uh, and it it hit some very, very good points. Um, and just, uh, sitting here with the staff, Sergeant Texera, we, uh, we immediately agreed with your suggestion about having. Uh, a follow-up, uh, town hall, uh, for, with young people, people that are being, uh, affected on this, uh, with this issue on a daily basis. I think that's a fantastic idea. That's something that we're certainly going to do. I can guarantee you that. Um, uh, I just wanted to comment about a few things about how we, as, uh, as the police service are addressing this problem and and it is. If not our, our, our top priority, it's it's one of our top, and I wanna say it's our top priority right now with with the amount of, um, gun and gang violence that. That we see happening, unfortunately, on an all-too-frequent basis throughout the city. Um, and I and I know I can speak for the, for the chief in the command, this is a top priority for for us and. And, uh, one of the ways that we do, uh, that that we, one of the strategies, at least, that that we are aggressively pursuing. And it's part of, this is part of the the neighborhood officer program, is is to try and, uh, prevent, uh, young people from getting. Uh, caught up in this type of activity, activity in any way, shape or form, either being victimized by it or or. Or, uh, succumbing to that type of activity that or becoming, uh, part of the gang culture. So, uh, so that is, uh, one of the biggest things that we're trying to do is is to, is to prevent it from even happening at a, at a very young age. Um, and it's something that we were continually working on, again, through our neighborhood officer programs, through our youth outreach programs. Um, we try to stop it before it happens and also when we, when, when we have young people that are are involved in it in terms of. Um, being in, being in a gang or being, uh, being seduced by that type of, uh, violent behavior. Um, you know, when we do have contact with them, we do everything we can to get them out. We have partnerships with various, um, um, uh, outreach, uh, community partners. And social workers and other agencies. Um, basically, it's it's all hands on deck as far as we're concerned and we will partner with anyone we can and, um, engage any. Uh, anyone that can bring anything to the table to help us prevent this from happening in 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 from the beginning. Or to to get people, get young people out of it. You know, we'll utilize anything we can at this point, because it's that important to us. And obviously, the 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 back half of this is the enforcement, uh, part of it, right? Um, is to to hold those that are engaged in it to account, to make those arrests, to get the guns off the street. Um, and we have been, I I'll tell you, we have been very successful, uh, right across the city by, uh. Uh, making numerous arrests and s- and seizing numerous guns. Unfortunately, it's. Uh, you know, there, there is a steady flow of handguns that come into the city illegally and we're, again, we're working with our partner agencies and law enforcement with, uh. You know, the GTA, um, law enforcement, um, uh, partners with, uh, Canada Border and Security with the federal government. We're doing everything we can. To to stem that flow, so there's, there's multiple pieces that go on to this, but. Um, I, what I can tell you, I guess, the big takeaway is it is a top priority for for us as a police service. Um, and I, from the twenty-two perspective, um, we're certainly gonna go forward with your suggestion. And I think it's a tremendous suggestion to to have another town hall with the young people. Uh, and to Steve's point, you know, we, there's been some changes along the way. We, we, you know, there, there's no longer school resource officers. That program, um, is no longer active. Um, and that's a separate conversation, the, but how that came to be. Uh, but the the neighborhood officer shoulders a lot of this. Um, and and I know that our neighborhood officers are, uh, there's programs that they run. Again, it's all about youth outreach. And making those, making those, uh, those connections. And having those conversations now that will prevent the, prevent, you know, our young people from going down that. That, uh, avenue and or or if they feel bullied or if they feel like, uh, they have been victimized or think they're going to be victimized, how we can assist them. So, um, so again, thank you very much for your comments. I think it was a, it was a great point to bring up and we're gonna be acting on that for sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And just to, um, just to echo what Superintendent Prohn said. We, there's also a gang prevention unit. It's actually based at twenty-three division. But if anybody on here, um, knows somebody who may be, you know. Be solicited by gangs or or thinking about entering into the whole gang world. Uh, feel free to touch base with myself or one of the neighborhood officers. Um, then you can find their emails on our website as well as the, um, the information that was put out earlier. I'll I'll put my email address in the, uh, chat group for everyone. Uh, I said, yeah, if you need some help or you know somebody, again, I can get you in contact with, uh, one of the gang prevention officers and, uh, put you through that way as well. As well as using, of course, our, uh, twenty-two division neighborhood officers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natasha. I also see, uh, Saleah is on the line here. She works for the City of Toronto Community Safety and Wellbeing. Uh, you had your hand up and I'm sure you could, uh. Give us a little input as to what you do and how you could help out. Saleah, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you, twenty-two division, for, uh, organizing this and really a good time now. Alyssa, I'm really sorry for the, uh, thing that you're going on, uh, with that. We are providing a lot of support to that, to families that has been impacted. On the east side and there are quite a few youth, uh, we are providing support. Uh, please reach out. I've sent you my email address. We just, different supporters available to the youth. As well as to the family that got impacted by this unfortunate incident that happened. And, uh, we will try our best and some supports are, groups are happening now, uh, including counseling, support and other thing. And also, uh, since you said you want to bring the youth together and definitely is a good opportunity to work with twenty-two division. With, uh, with the city, we do also provide grants for the, whenever incident like this happen. For people who got impacted, especially the community. To come to, you know, to meet and to come out with something that will be better for them for in the future. And to work with the twenty-two division and other partners. So I'm going to put my email again. And please reach out and there's a lot of support is there and it's very unfortunate that incident that happened. And it is impacted across the city of Toronto. And great work is being getting done by the Toronto Police, twenty-two division, twenty-three division. They all are trying their best. And people like you are the key people to partner and make sure our city which is safe to make it more safer. Thank you. And just, I'm going to, and my colleague is also over here, Shane, and we will, both of us will put our, eh, contact. And please reach out to us. Thank you, Staff Sergeant. Thank you, Natasha and everybody. Uh, great work. Amazing. Always is a wonderful to work with twenty-two division. Always. Thank you. And ta- thank you, uh, Consular, for being here. It's always, uh, wonderful to work with both the Consulors. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Saleah. That was awesome. And, uh, Alicia, I think you brought up a great point and, like I said, everybody's agreeing with you here and, uh. Congratulations and let's hope that we can get the help that you, that you need, that the kids in your neighborhood need. Uh, I don't see any other hands right now, so we're gonna go, there was a few questions and points put in the chat and we'll address them right now. Um, this one was for Constable Karpik. Uh, it was from a Pamela, says, so for clarification, officers wait for the public to report dangerous driving. I think many pedestrians would like to see officers going after the many drivers who flagrantly disobey traffic speed limits. Uh, and drive while texting, drive the wrong way on one-way streets, et cetera. Um, Jimmy, do you want to address that or would you like me?
I'll tell you, really, all I can say is every day we have enforcement officers. I'm out there every day as well. And obviously, those are the offenses that we're targeting. So anything we see will obviously be investigating and laying charges. But again, we need help from the community because we can't be everywhere. And if there's specific concerns on maybe a residential street that we normally don't patrol on a daily basis, we need that information to come to us. So that's what we appreciate, is the new information, just like that, uh, I believe it was Barry brought up the point about Kipling subway. That I wasn't aware of, but now we can add that to our patrols.
Yeah, thanks, Jimmy. And, um, just so everybody's aware that we are out there every day and we're doing traffic enforcement and it's. Not only our priority response officers who, who are generally busy with radio calls, but they do, they do as much traffic enforcement as they can, but there's a lot of other. Units out there, the Toronto Police, that enforce the roads that everybody drives on, including, uh, the Community Response Unit. We have officers out every day doing it. And, uh, we do have traffic service officers that work right out of twenty-two division. Uh, they're called Vision Zero Officers and their mandate is specifically, uh, enforcement of the roads, so. Uh, definitely, we are enforcing, uh, but when we're asking for, uh, specifics like, uh, Constable Karpik said, if. We're not aware of a situation in in a certain area that, um, there's a problem, please let us know and that will, um. We can dedicate more resources to specifically to that area, but we are out there, yes. Uh, I just see a hand, uh, by Angela. Go ahead, Angela.
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Um, I just wanted to take this time because I have to run, so I'm just looking at the time. Two things I wanna mention. Um, Alicia, there is lots of hope because when I moved to centrally Tobico, um, twenty-plus years ago. It was strictly the Bloods and the Pricks and I am proud to say that my community is very cleaned up. My community neighborhood officers are fantastic. The officers overall, twenty-two division is a fantastic division. I am very happy to be proud of the CPLC and working with them also. So have have faith. It will work. It it made me change my career too, uh, to enter the social field and, um. And also the fact that, um, getting to know your community is very, very important. Not everybody is cut out for community work, but I think the best of us are here on this call tonight. So have faith and, um, and as far as twenty-two division is concerned, I just wanna say quickly before I go. Is I think having the town halls this way is a lot better than coupling it with the CPLC meetings. So if we can do something like this every quarterly, at least, unless there's an emergency and people need to call in like you recommended. To file a report and things like that, I think this is the way we need to go from here on in this new year going forward. Having these kind of quarterly town halls, um, unless there's something emergency that comes up and we have to call a different type of town hall. But thank you very much. I like the structure. I like what has happened and please get your kinks, technical kinks, um, managed and, um. Moving forward. Thank you very much, guys. And, um, and Alicia, I'm available also and, um. It's very easy to get me through the CPLC or the, um, twenty-two division. Thank you. Good night, guys, and thank you for that evening.
Thanks, Angela.
Not a problem. Bye-bye.
And, uh, to reiterate what Angela said, this is something that we are planning on on doing more often and we were planning on doing it quarterly. We might actually do another meeting a little bit, uh, sooner than quarterly, just to try and clean up some of the people that weren't able to get ahold of or to log on to this meeting. And as Angela says, we're gonna try and iron out our kinks. I think, just so everybody knows what happened. I think we got onto a free web, um, access through WebEx and they put a limit of only a hundred people, which we weren't aware of. And they also put a time limit, which is why we keep getting kicked out. So we're gonna rectify that situation. We've already talked to our IT department and next time we have a meeting, hopefully we'll have two hundred people out and we can. Uh, go for an hour and a half without getting booted out. Uh, I'm gonna go to another question, um, that was typed into our chat. It was from, uh, Jody and she says, can you speak to the recent murder of a neighborhood teen? Although it did not occur in twenty-two division, it seems that gun activity are teens.
I had just put that before Alicia had spoken before we got cut off.
Yeah.
Um, and then she came back into the meeting and she spoke to it, so it's basically what we had already spoken about. From the Lake Shore community, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, let's see, we have another one from Pamela. Uh, the officers who spoke about the Winter Watch Traffic Program seem to be focused on cracking down on pedestrians engaging in mid-block crossings rather than dangerous driver behavior. Sounds a lot like blaming the victims. Unfortunately, will the program not also focus on dangerous driving? Actually, so. It 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 is in regards to, uh, pedestrians, uh, being killed on the roadways. Uh, however, we are focusing on, uh, the four, uh, main reasons for, uh, accidents and that's, um. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's, uh, uh, speeding, distracted driving, uh, impaired driving and. Fourth, dangerous driving. So yes, they are all danger, are they all are driving offenses? Yeah, thank you. Um, so they are d- um, driving offenses and that's what we are looking for. Obviously, uh, pedestrians, uh, walking across the road, jaywalking, that is a cause of some, some accidents, but, uh, we are. But we are looking more towards driving offenses rather than pedestrian offenses. I think I saw another hand up here. Amber, go ahead. We have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to jump on to the point that Alicia made because obviously I think it's really resonating with a lot of residents in tonight's town hall. And just from personal experience, I live in New Toronto. I'm over on 13th Street in Lake Shore and have grown up advocating for youth in this community for far too long and for long-term sustainable solutions to keep, you know, our, our peers and our loved ones out of these kinds of circumstances in terms of the guns and the gangs. One thing that I just really wanted to flag, and I think it's an important consideration, is that despite the heroic efforts of our Toronto Police, they will not be able to solve the issue of guns and gangs on their own. And I think, you know, the ongoing discussions and collaborations, bringing stakeholders to the table, having, you know, active and engaged counselors like Counselor Holiday, you know, and Angela noting, you know, really being able to see a measurable difference in, in community safety and outcomes there. All of those pieces are so critically important if we actually want to see long-term solutions here. And so I am, I'm so excited and I'm very encouraged by the, the sort of momentum that this particular discussion has raised. And I look forward to the next steps because our kids deserve the best, our young people deserve the best. They all have bright futures and, and they need to be supported, encouraged, understood. And, you know, that all starts with all of us paying attention and working together. So I just wanted to thank you all so much for your, your great comments and Alicia for your leadership on this, on this piece. And I look forward to being part of those discussions going forward.
Amber, thank you. You've nailed it right on the head. It's all about, you know, getting together with the community and the police and building, again, sustainable solutions. And that, and that's a big thing is that partnership and sustainability. And if we can get that done with the community, I think it will, will help a lot. But that's where we need everybody on board. And again, nobody has to come right up to us to say, hey, this is what's going on. There's always crime stoppers. There's all sorts of ways to get in touch and let us know what's going on, but we have to work together. And that's the only way going forward. Like you said, we can't do it on our own. The community can't do it on our own. It has to be a collaborative effort. And yeah, hopefully going forward, hopefully some people can take this back to their communities and again, grow from there.
All right. And with that, we are just coming up on nine o'clock, which is a good time. I've run out of questions that I've found on the chat and there are no more hands up. So I'm going to thank you all for coming out tonight and taking part in this conversation. We all took something out of it. And we're certainly going to be working hard to come up with some of the responses and some of the problems that you've, you've brought to our attention. As we said, we're going to have this type of meeting. We're looking to do it quarterly. We might do it a little bit earlier this time, just to try and get some of the people that didn't get in on this, on this meeting. I apologize again for the IT problems. That was unforeseen, but it's growing type thing. I agree with a lot of the comments that this is a good way to, to bring forth everybody. I think a lot more people show up this way than, than trying to come out to a town, the old town hall meetings where, you know, it's, people just can't make it. But we had 100 people on this meeting within 10 minutes of it starting. And I know there were a number of people that just couldn't get on. So I'm fairly confident that we probably could have had 150 to 200 people in the meeting. So that's great. Look for it. Coming up on the same, we're going to be advertising it on all of our social media sites in 22 Division. This meeting was recorded, as many of you remember from the very beginning. And we're going to post it on our social media for those that unfortunately couldn't log on to our meetings tonight. Okay, so thanks very much for joining us, folks, and have a good night.
Thanks, Julia. Hi, everyone.
Thank you.